Good evening. I call the June 4, 2024, regular board meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the agenda for the June 4, 2024, regular board meeting.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Washington, is that correct? All right, board members, please vote. Yes. Yes, the motion was seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. I should point out that Mrs. Nash is out of town and unavailable tonight. We will now move to item 3.1, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, receipt of legal advice for insurance matter, receipt of legal advice regarding, and receipt of legal advice regarding the superintendent's evaluation.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Washington, is that correct? All right, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. The board will now enter executive session. May I have a motion to end the executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I'd like to make a motion to end executive session at 6:51 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, is seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, motion passes. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. LaShawna McFadden will present this evening's presentation. Ms. McFadden.
This is a picture of our legislative committee, and if the members that are here, if you will please stand, that would be Mr. Larry Smalls, Ms. McFadden, and Ms. Lisa Ellis. So, and the rest of them are pictured, I'm on the far, on my side, it's the left-hand side, then we have Ms. Renea Jamison, who is our secretary, our teacher representative, or Ms. Lisa Ellis, and Ms. Meredith Blocker, and then we have Ms. McFadden, and we also have Mr. Larry Smalls. That's Melissa McFadden, I should say your first name as well. So, this is the list of the Richland Two Legislative Committee members. Again, we have the two representatives. Okay, so Ms. Meredith Blocker is not here.
Ms. McFadden, one second. I saw two representatives, I'm no longer part of the...
This is the legislative committee, you were on the safety and security committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. So, again, that's Ms. Lisa Ellis, Ms. Meredith Blocker, they are both from Blithwood High School. We have three parent representatives, Renea Jamison, Larry Smalls, and Melissa McFadden, they are from the community, and then two board members, myself and Ms. Angela Nash, who is not here tonight. Ms. Meredith Blocker, she's a high school Spanish teacher, she decided to step in for us on a couple of occasions, and there's the, everyone provided their background, but the thank you at the top, that's what I gave to each of them at our last meeting. She had a lot of input when it came to the budget, and as well as the classes switching over from Spanish at the eighth grade level, and getting those two credits, so we were able to get a lot of information about that from her. And then we have Ms. Lisa Ellis, she has been with us, with the district for quite some time, she's actually a teacher at Blithwood High School, she joins us from there, and she's actually here tonight, she's in the back, if you'll wave to everyone, they're standing. I'm gonna let you guys read the bios on their own, because they are very impressive. Ms. Renea Jamison is not able to join us tonight, and she was our vice chair, she actually had a son that graduated CFK, or CFI, CFI, this past week, or last week. She's a parent representative also, Ms. Melissa McFadden, she also had a child that graduated from Spring Valley High School this year, she has three more in the district. And Mr. Larry Smalls, he has two children in the district, and he's with a representative from Palmetto Citizens Federal Credit Union. So, this is a team we met every single month, starting in October, which was a great time, because we were diligent in making sure that we met, we went over policies, and I'll be giving the legislative update for that later on in the program. But, one thing we started out with was a civility pledge that we had from South Carolina School Board Association, so the background of these people, if you will read them and look them up, you will see it is a very diverse group, so when you talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, this group represented, because we all had different backgrounds, and the stereotypical things that you would think by looking at a particular person, that they would be, it's not really true, so all stereotypes of this group have been out the door, and that's what we looked for, but all of us were on one accord, working together to make sure that the things that we were looking at for policies for our students were done appropriately. So, thank you all so very much, I wanted to thank you all publicly in this inspirational moment, if you guys want to come to the mic and help me lead us in the pledge of allegiance, that would be great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden, and especially thank you to the committee members that are here tonight. We will now move on to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 4, 2024, regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, is seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. Tonight, no one, we have no one signed up for public participation, so we will move on to item 7.1, student appeals. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, is seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding student number two?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to deny the appeal for student number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, is seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is five yes, one no, and one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
Yes, I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students number one and student number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott, seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Dr. Elkin Scott, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct, thank you.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I move to accept the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, is that correct, Ms. Porter? All right, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. We will now move to unfinished business, action requested. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision for policy GCC/GDC, employment leaves and absences?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the revisions to policy GCC/GDE, employee leaves and absences.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revisions for policies GCD, administrative staff vacations and holidays?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the revisions for policy GCD, administrative staff vacations and holidays.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, is seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision for policy GDD, support staff vacations and holidays?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve policy revision, policy GDD, support staff vacations and holidays.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, is seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Agostini, is that correct on the screen?
It is.
Board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the policy proposal for the voluntary sick leave bank?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
Since this is so dear to my heart, I move to adopt a voluntary sick leave bank policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Ms. Washington? No, thank you. Motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott, is seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Dr. Elkin Scott?
That's correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the policy revision for policy BDE, board committees?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
I move that we use option B as our model for board and committees, with the removal of the last paragraph that states remove may make reasonable and timely efforts when it comes to meetings.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Dr. Elkin Scott, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Could Dr. Elkin Scott point out to me what your...
Pardon me? Okay, go ahead.
I want to know where exactly you're saying...
Okay, if you go to the last paragraph, let me see. Okay, it says, "All committee meetings will be open to the public." I want to strike through where it says committees will make reasonable and timely efforts to give notice of their meetings in accordance with... We have to give that, so we shouldn't say, "We'll make reasonable and timely efforts," it should be done, so I just wanted that removed.
Dr. Elkin?
Yes.
And that's option A, so everyone needs to look at option A.
No, it's in option A and option B as well, it's in both. If you go to the very last paragraph, you'll find it in both. Do you see where...
You're signing the last one?
Are you in option A or B, Ms. McFadden?
B.
B, okay. If you come all the way down, stroll down to the very last paragraph where it says "all committees," right there.
I was looking at the first sentence, I'm sorry.
What, no, Mr. Trap, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I just, you know, I appreciate what Dr. Scott is saying, but one of the confusing parts about the committee has been that it hasn't been written out specifically, like direct, so I actually do like having, while you and I know that FOIA requires us to give 24 hours notification...
Right.
There seems to have been an issue with board members on the interpretation of policy, so I would like to actually see this remain in here, just so that it is clear, especially when we have new board members that chair committees, that they know that they have to give 24 hours notice.
Mr. Chair.
I would like to see that, but this will make reasonable and timely efforts, so...
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
My suggestion would be to add the 24 hours, the FOIA language there, and still take out the reasonably, because it makes it very gray.
Okay.
I can amend the motion to say that they will make 24 hours, will give 24 hour notice.
What, a suggestion, would you withdraw your motion and remake it? Because then we don't have to vote on it to amend it.
That's true, yeah, that's the easy way to do it.
Since you made that, if you will...
Yes, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you.
And then make it, yes, so I'll go ahead and make it.
All right, would someone like to make a motion regarding policy BDE?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott.
I move that we use option B as our model for board committees, and that we would add in the very last paragraph, hold on a second, let me get back to it, that committees will give 24 hour notice of their meetings in accordance with, and continue that part, so we're striking through the other part of that.
All right, I want to make sure, oh, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. or Dr. Elkin Scott, and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I have just a couple of questions about the committee and the first paragraph. When it says, "A special committee is established to perform a specific task and is dissolved when the task is completed and the final report is given or otherwise discharged by the board," its existence and charge come from the board, and its work is intended to support the board's work, so I'm looking for confirmation that committees are to report to the board, that they may not, if, they may not make a decision on their own, that they must come to the board and they report to the board.
That's correct, by design, a special committee explores topics or interests, and then come back to the full board with their recommendations, and the board takes action.
Thank you, and then my final question, or just looking for clarification, "The function of special committees will be fact-finding, deliberative, and advisory, but never legislative or administrative." Can you elaborate on that, particularly the legislative and administrative? It's the last sentence of what I was just reading, of the first paragraph.
Right, and so when the board chooses to establish a special committee, it has a very specific task, and typically it's to explore something, and then to come back to the full board with the recommendation, so it's very deliberative, it's very, a very specific task, similar to the special committee that was designed for the IG report, it had a very specific task, they completed that task, came back to the board and reported, and then the committee was dissolved.
But it should not be doing legislative work?
Yeah, or in the administrative.
Okay, thank you so much, no more questions.
All right, board members, any other questions or comments? All right, we just need to have, all right, Dr. Scott, does the motion reflect what you would like to see?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present, the motion passes. We will now move to new business, no action requested. Our third quarter financial report is next, the agenda item in this section is the report. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Stephen Struther, our executive director for finances, to come and present the third quarter financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, good evening, board chair, members of the board, hope you all are doing well tonight, and I'm here tonight to give you a third quarter financial update for the quarter ending March 31, 2024. I think you have in front of you a PDF format, I have presented on the screen a PowerPoint, they should follow right along with one another. So, to begin with, we'll talk about the general fund, schedule of revenues for the quarter ending March 31, 2024. If you'll notice, we have budgeted actual and the difference and the percentage columns at the top, and we have broken those columns down into federal, local, and state, which is the sources of our revenue here in the school district. Federal, if you'll notice, is the smallest amount of revenue that we receive here in the district, and local being the next, and of course, state being the largest. We have received as of March 31, about 79% of our projected general fund revenue at this point. I'd like to point out a couple of things here, indirect cost on the top line under federal, indirect cost, we're able to recoup indirect cost from our federal funds that we have here in the district, so you may see an indirect cost as an expense line in the federal fund, but we're able to pull that back into general fund revenue. So, we've received more than indirect cost revenue than budgeted, is the reason you see that difference there, so we've received over our indirect cost anticipated revenue because of the federal funds that we've actually been able to recoup. because of the federal funds that we've actually been able to recoup indirect cost on. Also, interest income, we've received more interest income, and some other local revenue as well, we've received more than we've anticipated. Overall, we, like I said, we've received about 79% of our anticipated general fund revenue at this point in time, which is on track, because we are about three quarters of the way through the school year. In graph form, which is also on page one of your PDF, your local revenue is about 42%, federal, a very small percentage, about 1%, state is the largest portion of our revenue that we receive here in Richland, too, at about 57% revenue. This slide corresponds to page two of your PDF, and these are general fund expenditures, broken down into the categories that you see on the left-hand side. We have budgeted $359 million, actual expenditures as of March 31 are $234 million. We also have encumbered around $10 million, which leaves us a balance of $114 million, which is about 68% of our expended to date, which is on track for being three quarters of the way through the school district, through the, through the school year. In graph form, you'll see the remaining budget is about 32%, we have about 3% encumbered of those funds, and the actual expenditures are around 65%. Next, I would like to call your attention to EIA, or Education Improvement Act funds. These are funds that come directly from the state. You see the funds there listed on the, in the left-hand column with their names, usually they're in the 300 category of funds. You will see budgeted revenue in the, in the next column, which is what we anticipate receiving, that some of those include carryover from the, from the previous year, along with new revenue. You'll also see a revenue received column, an expenditure date column, encumbrances, and a remaining balance. Few things I'd like to point out here is we have a 309 Arts and Education Fund there, which is actually a reimbursable grant. So, you will see that we've received $1,894 in revenue out of a $25,000 budget, and we've actually expended to date $7,987, and we have some encumbrances left over there. So, the reason for the expended to date compared to the revenue received is this a reimbursable grant, okay? The next thing is essentially we are National Board certified, we received those funds a little bit later in the year, but we go ahead and pay our National Board certified teachers out early in the beginning of the year, I believe, so you will see the expended to date category equalling the revenue received, okay? So, those are our EIA funds, brief overview there. Next, we want to look at federal funds. So, federal funds, I'd like to point out that most of these funds, you have about three different grants rolling at one time. In other words, for Title I, you may have a 22 Title I that ended September 30 of 2023. Also, you have another Title I rolling at the same time, which is a 23 Title I that will end September 30, 2024, and then finally, you have another Title I in play, which is a 24 Title I, which will end September 30, 2025. So, those budgets and amounts expended, taking into account all three of those grants that are rolling at one time, it's not the case for all of them, but for most of those grants, they are 27-month grants. They're also reimbursable, so you will see the revenue received indicating less than the expenditures, simply because for federal funds, we have to expend our cash first and ask for reimbursement, so that's the reason for the lag in revenue as compared to expenditures. Drawing your attention to our favorite subject, ARPSR III. The $28 million budget that you see there is not our original budget, our original budget was $38,500, but this is the budget that was remaining at the beginning of the school year, out of the $38 million budget. To date, we've received a little over $5.8 million in revenue, and we've expended a little over $9 million in revenue, and we also have some encumbrances out there, which leaves us a balance of about $18 million. We've put in place, we've done, talked to the State Department and gotten approval to do amendments, and we are prepared to spend the remaining balance of the $18 million we have until September 30, 2024 to do that, and we have a plan in place to do that. So, I know that's, since ESRS is coming to an end, that is a point of concern, but we do have a plan in place to spend that, and you'll also notice there that there's another ESRS fund there, that ESRS fund, which was CRSA ESRS, was spent by September 30 in its entirety, so that's what that means there. For your board outlook, we see the school board, your budget for salaries and benefits is $158,380. You've expended to date $97,000 of that, which you have a balance of $61,000. Also, under services and supplies, auditing services falls under your budget, we have, we have expended $16,500 of that auditing services budget, we have some other encumbrances left, we have our auditor coming on site, third week in June, I believe, to begin his pre-work. We also have your legal services there, travel for the board, of course organizational dues and fees, those are fees that you pay to your, your organizations that you join. So, essentially, you have, out of your $451,000 budget, you have a balance of $87,502 in that budget. And finally, on the last page, you'll see the, bring your attention to the 2018 bond referendum, and we have two categories there, improvement in safety and technology. The budget there was $381 million, we have spent to date $337 million, we have some encumbrances out there as well, and the same for the arts and athletic facilities, we had a budget of $86 million, have spent $72 million, and we have some encumbrances left out there for $14 million, and the bottom line shows the, the full picture of the 2018 bond referendum. I believe that is my last slide, so I'll open, I'm open to any questions you all may have.
Thank you, board members, are there any questions?
Just one question, and I'm not sure if this is a part of that, and you can, tell me if not, but when we receive grant money, where exactly do we allocate that in this presentation, or it's not a part of this?
So, when we receive grant money, you'll notice that in your special revenue.
Okay, special revenue.
So, these are the, these are the grants, most of these are federal grants.
Okay.
And there are some other grants embedded, but you'll also notice that there's a line down there that says other funds, 44, that's approximately 44 other funds, which are special revenue funds, and those are our other grants as well, and the total there is around $8 million in budget, and the revenue received and its expenditures is also allocated out there, but, you know, we figured these were the highlights that you all wanted to see, but the 44 others are out there, and I can certainly give you the information on those other grants as well.
I would love to just see some of the grants that we have written or received monies for as well, and then also how they're utilized department-wise, yes.
We can certainly do that, and we also have some local-type grants, other than federal grants, that we put out there in 800 funds, schools' right grants, and we give those, those funds out there in a special fund for those schools.
Right.
So, there are, and all those are included in that 44 other funds, so we can certainly pull a sample for you or give you a full listing and let you tell us which, which ones you want to see, but we can certainly provide that information.
Absolutely, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, board members? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a legislative update, or legislative, legislative committee update. Ms. McFadden, let me start that over, hold on. Mrs. LaShonda McFadden will present her update to the board, Ms. McFadden.
Okay, thank you so much, I'm gonna wait for my clicker real quick. Thank you, Tony. So, this is the final report for the 2023-2024 Board Legislative Committee. It falls under Policy BJ, Board Legislative Program, that was started in August of this year. Policy BJ, Board Legislative Program. School board members are agents of the state and are responsible for working with the state and national congress for the passage of new laws and repeal or modify existing laws. Board members must remain informed of current legislation and developing an annual long-term, long-range legislative program. You can't really see it, but what I have in the black down there is, the recommendation was for a legislative committee as a standing committee. The board legislative contact is authorized to speak on behalf of the board on legislative matters. So, Policy BJ, which is the Board Legislative Program, it says, it states in the Board Legislative Program Administrative Rules, suggest to elect a new BLC at the last meeting of the year in June, and to develop a long-term legislative plan. And if you look at Exhibit 2.0, which is in the back at the end of the slides, you'll see the actual administrative rule for that. So, this is the overview, so there was a great quote that stated, "Never doubt what a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the, the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has, and that's Dr. Margaret Mead. So, what you have on there is all the different things that we have done as a legislative committee. We've attended training seminars, we've contacted local groups about pending legislation, organizing a letter-writing campaign, I attended the COSPA advocacy meeting, and there's plenty more on there. And over to the right-hand side, we received this SCSSBA regional, at the regional meeting in October of 2023, and this is their board legislative contact responsibilities, and it's 2.0 because they revamped it. And there's a lot of different things that are suggested that we do, or that, that as a board legislative contact, that I was asked and required to do. And so, some of those were meet with the, the local legislation to discuss education issues, write the district, write district delegation a letter thanking them for their support, and that's just to name a few. So, this is how Policy BDE, Board Committees for the Legislative Committee began. It wasn't a swift process, as you can see, it was well over a year in the ma, a year in the making, starting in February of 2023. A request was sent to all board members with the, with the scope and sequence of the suggested recommendation for the Legislative Committee, and it was a request and out to start it. Due to the other committees, like the IG Committee and the Safety and Security Meeting, Committee that had been started, it was decided to postpone the Legislative Committee because all of our members were doing other things. So, it was resubmitted a couple of more times, and then we had to switch over in leadership, and then in August, it became an agenda item, and it was removed, it was put back on the agenda item, as an agenda item, on August the 22, and then with the, with the vote of six to one, it passed for me to be the board legislative contact. In October, we had our first legislative meeting, it did, the leadership for that committee did shift, I had to find other members, so you'll see the first one has different members on there. It went from a standing committee, which was only made up of board members, to an ad hoc committee, which was made up of community, community members, and the ones that you had seen, and that were here for the inspirational moment. And then on November the 14th, there was a policy, an agenda item brought up to discuss Policy BDE, another on March the 5th to discuss this same policy, a work session on BDE, and then today, there was actually a vote on whether to decide to do option A or option B, so that's where we are now with the board committees. So, at the, the time that this legislative committee began, there were no clear guidance on the committee, and so when I submitted the proposal, it was accepted and to move forward with that, with the way that it was stated. So, the final draft of the, of the Richland II Legislative Committee is the picture of the ladies and gentlemen that we have to the right, and again, that's listed there. In the middle, if you zoom in, you will see the scope, the members, the administrative staff that was working with us, the meeting dates, the process and miscellaneous, and at the bottom, you will see the civility pledge, which is how we begin all of our meetings. That was in, to the, the far right, you'll see the civility pledge, that's what was given to us by SCSSBA, and so we took on that challenge to come into our meetings and discuss the policies and legislations that are current and coming to us from our district delegation. So, in the beginning, what we decided to do was we took the, the calendars that was provided for us by SCSSBA, they already had the program and the calendars and the toolkits at, on their website, it's just a matter of us taking it and using it. So, the first one, which was the calendar, which is where we were supposed to review the policies, and all the policies in the district, that one was a huge undertaking, and it was actually abandoned, it was unsuccessful, we could not get through it because it was a lot of policies in a short amount of time, and there wasn't a lot of people. So, that one is something that we will have to work on in order to become productive in that one. But we did have the schedule set up, it was on Fridays, and I know Dr. Scott said she didn't like it on Fridays, and I understand because it's hard to get out here on, at 1:30 on Friday, so we will have to look into how we can fix that. For the second one, which is the advocacy calendar, I rated it, and we got an 86 on that, and the reason why I say an 86 is because the ones that are highlighted in red are the ones that we were able to complete successfully. The ones from July to October, I didn't count those because it's not July yet, and this didn't, the program didn't start until October, was our first meeting, so I didn't count those four months, but I did highlight those things that either myself, the legislative committee, or other board members did, and so we have 86%. So, of that, 21 and a half of those, we were able to get complete out of the 26 that are on there. So, the next topic area was the grassroots area, which was networking. And the picture to the, to the left was the Legislative Committee at our last meeting, we had tons of meetings, like I said, every single month, and we were getting in here and going through the legislation that was provided at the district, at the Capitol. By the way, I wasn't able to attend day at the Capitol, but we did have more members that did, y'all don't be mad at me for taking this picture, but I needed to include it in there, I did give them a heads-up that I would be going through social media and things and grabbing some pictures of everyone, because everyone has a part in this, where some people may not be able to attend an event, other people are, but we are one board, so we're all represented together, so I wanted to add them on there. So, the Legislative Committee Recommendation Schedule, and as it was noted, that we're not able to do anything without the board's permission, we have to make sure that anything that we do, we run it by them. So, what we have, the first column is, these are the, the meeting dates that we had, October 20th, 24th, 14th, and the 7th of December. So, those were the meetings, and then from those, those meetings, we come up with some ideas of what we could do, and one of them was the invitation to network with legislators on the winter celebration, and that's actually one of the mandates that I'm supposed to do in October, or it's, it was given to be done as an item in October from the board legislative contact. It states that I need to meet with local delegation to discuss education issues and to invite them to the district to participate in, in events. And so, that was one of the, the challenges that we were supposed to do, so we, we brought that to the board for winter celebration, it is in Exhibit 3.0, and that failed for a 3-4 vote. A lot of that had to do with the budget that we would have to have at that time, again, committees weren't established, so there was no budget money to put into hosting an event for the legislation here, and of course, there were other things going on in December, it was just maybe not a good timing, so next time when we come back and we look at inviting them, we'll pick a better date and have more time to go through it, but that, that actually did fail, we didn't get that one through. So, the meeting dates... So the meeting dates in 2024 were January, February, March, April. We did all the months. And I try to make sure that even though that at times, you know, we had to have special meetings for the board, I try to make sure that I could make sure that we're staying on point because it is a requirement that we were to meet every month. So I wanted to make sure that we could get all of our meetings in. And some of them, we were kind of pushing it toward that last one, on April 30th, to make sure we got our April meeting in because of spring break and close. But we were able to accomplish those and get our meeting dates in. So from that, the next one is the Safety and Security Proposal to SCSBA. That is also one of the things that we had to do for the toolkit calendar, which is make sure that if we had any resolutions that we wanted to propose, that we got them in. And it actually passed to a 5-1-1 vote. One person was not here, and the other one was an abstention. But it did pass, and that's going on to be read from the booklet at the Delegate Assembly in December. And the last one was on April the 9th. That's our Competency-Based Education Advocacy and Support Letter, and that's Exhibit 5.0. And that is also a mandate that was supposed to be done. It was a request that in May that we wrote the district delegation thanking them for their support in public education. So the letter was written. We drafted it up. We sent it to the board to recommend that we complete that option that we had for May. It died as a 3-4 vote. So maybe next time, we'll figure out a different way to bring it to the board so that it can pass and get a letter out to them. So, okay, my slide is orange, so it's kind of, you can't really see it up there. Next time, I'll remember to choose a brighter color. But for the 125th South Carolina General Assembly, the proposed legislation is considered dead due to the type of election season that we're in. So this is the fourth year, so that means everybody, everybody in the State House, their seat is up for reelection. That means anything that someone has proposed since the two years they've been in or the four years as a representative, it's no longer going to be there because there could be new people coming in, and they will rewrite a legislation. But what we want to do is hold on to some of these that didn't get passed and bring it back to them if we like it and say, "We would like for you to rewrite this and put this back on a proposal" and send it back to, so it'll go back through the whole process again. But right now, everything that didn't pass and doesn't get the governor's signature is going to be dead. But the ones that are bright that you can see, these are the ones that we actually delved into really well. There were five of us, so each of us took two. The reason why is because we really wanted to spend time and go through it so we don't have another proviso 1.108 where we don't know what is written in these bills. And when they come out, we're in a frenzy trying to figure out what we need to do. So we really wanted to take our job seriously and make sure that what is being written in these legislations, that we know what's going on and that there's no surprises. And so that's why there's only 10 up here. But the ones that I have listed are like 15, but there were so many more that actually were written out, but they just don't make it to the table. They may not even make it to the first reading. And we know that here because some of the things that we do don't make it to the first reading. And so that's for that. So the next step is, this does not have to be on a committee. The committee was only something that I decided to do because it is a requirement that I come up with a long-term and a short-term legislative plan. That was what I was mandated to do as the Board Legislative Contact. So I decided to create the Legislative Committee. We're going to have to come up with something, whatever it is for this, because that's what the requirement is. But the next step is that on June the 25th, we're going to need to select the Board Legislative Contact. That is a policy that we have, unless we want to change the policy not to do that. But the Legislative Committee doesn't necessarily have to be a committee. But we do need to figure out a way to keep up with policies, to keep up with legislation, and the other things that are coming through the legislation delegation. So this will be the 126th delegation. And that is all I have for my final report for the Legislative Committee. All the exhibits are after this page, and I'll just click through them really quick so that you guys can see what they are. And basically, what it is, is the documents that we submitted, the letters, the resolutions, and then a screenshot of the vote.
All right, thank you, Ms. McFadden. Board members, are there any questions or comments? All right, we will move on to our next item. The next agenda item is a discussion regarding an appointee to the Richland County Board of Assessment Appeals. The purpose of the Board of Assessment Appeals is to provide an independent and neutral body to review property tax disputes between the assessor and the taxpayer. All board members who are appointed should have a background in one of the following fields: appraisal, real estate development, condemnation experience, or experience with real estate litigation matters. And we have been asked, as a board, to pick someone to be appointed to this board. Board members, are there any thoughts on how we're going to come up with a name for this?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
Mrs. Nash isn't here tonight, but I would suggest that I'm actually going to lean more on her because she is a real estate agent in the district, and she does have a couple of people's names. I'm not privy to those names at this point, but I would like to lean heavily on her for that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or thoughts?
Mr. Chair, we've been receiving this information for some time in our board briefings. Has anybody reached out to you? I don't have a recommendation. Has anybody recommended somebody to you?
I think the only person that has recommended anybody is Mrs. Nash. Has, I think, two names? Was it two names that she had?
Is she going to share those with the rest of the board, for the rest of the board to?
Yeah, I thought those were emailed out to the whole board, but y'all haven't seen that.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat the qualifications once again that you read?
Well, what I have right here in front of me, and this may not be a comprehensive list, but they need experience in the following fields: appraisal, real estate development, condemnation experience, or experience with real estate litigation matters. And I would like to add that I also asked around some people I knew that were in real estate, and I was not able to find anyone that was interested in being on this committee.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I'm waiting to hear back. And so I reserve, I have reservations in sharing the name until I know for sure that I want to take it on.
When is this due? And are you going to bring all of the names before us? How was that?
I think really that's what we're, whatever we decide to do. There's no deadline, as far as I know. I saw an email earlier where it said there's no deadline, but they would like someone as soon as possible.
Okay, because I know before, and thank you for bringing this to us because normally the superintendent makes a suggestion, and we normally don't get involved. So I would just ask the superintendent, do you have a suggestion that you would like to share? That maybe you can share with the board later. You don't have to share tonight.
No, I don't. Because you're right, Dr. Scott, in the past, the superintendent selected the person and sent that name in and just informed the board. But as Ms. McFadden brought to our attention, it's a board responsibility, and therefore, the board should be making that decision. So no, we don't have, I don't have a recommendation on who to appoint. The only information I would share is that they have reached out to us, excuse me, several times. And what the county has shared with us is that it's very important that we have someone this year because this is a year of reassessment. And if we don't have representation, it could adversely impact us.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Agostini.
Yeah, and I agree with Dr. Elkin and Scott. In the past, we've always relied on administration, but I can see their hesitation. We seem to have, or there were big discrepancies over the, I think it was the Health Committee, Health Advisory Committee, so now they're reluctant. But in the past, I've always appreciated the fact that administration has gone out into the community and expeditiously found somebody and not had this be a pending issue. Because I think I've been looking at the notifications for two months and not seen or heard from any colleague of a recommendation. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Porter.
I would recommend that we all receive a bio or something of the recommendations prior to putting it back on the agenda for a vote so that we can have time to read about them. And then also, I would encourage that any of the partners that are regularly working with Richland 2, that may meet these qualifications, I would not be opposed to at least receiving a suggestion of a partner that has this experience from the district to add to that list of people.
Yes, thank you. And I think one of the, I think one of the goals to us having this conversation tonight is the public is now aware of this. And, you know, Ms. Nash is the only person that has submitted any names. If the public would like to reach out to committee, to board members, and, you know, that's at least a thought. So, but I will see that the emails that I have from, and I thought those emails were sent out to everybody, but you guys have not gotten an email with names in it. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I can make one recommendation, if we just kind of put a deadline on it so that it doesn't roll over into the new school year and that we can get something to them, you know, by July 31st?
Yeah, that's plenty. I mean, that's quite a while out. We could... All right, any other suggestions or comments? All right, we'll now look at the draft agenda for the June 25th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is June 25th of 2024. The board will meet to conduct its regularly scheduled business meeting beginning at 5:30 PM with a call to order, then move to approval of the agenda. Once the agenda has been approved, we will move to executive session. We will discuss public session, I mean, student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, receipt of legal advice, which is a litigation update, employment recommendations, and certified releases. And we should release to the public, back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will have the inspirational moment, Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be done by Ms. McFadden. Then move to the consent agenda, which would include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. We'll then move to public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and any as-needed items that were discussed in executive session. We'll then move to unfinished business action requested. We will look at policy revision, BDE, which is Board Committees for a Second Reading. Then we'll have the approval of the 2024-2025 General Fund Budget. Next, move to agenda, draft agenda for the July 9th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, followed by our, if needed, items of public participation, executive session, voting on executive session items. We'll then move to new business action requested, election of board officers for the 2024-2025 school year, followed by board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you'd like to see made to this agenda or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I would like added to the July 9th meeting, Policy BID Board Compensation. July...
Ms. Agostini, I was going to ask, are you making a motion to add that?
Oh, I moved, yep. I moved to add Policy BID Board Compensation to the July 9th, 2024 Board Meeting Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. McFadden? All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. McFadden to add a discussion about a policy, BID, is that?
Correct, BID, Board Compensation.
To the July 9th Board Meeting. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Yes, I reached out about a week or two ago when I received my, I guess, my mid-May paycheck and was surprised by the amount and thought that I'd been overpaid. So I asked for, and I knew that I had missed a workshop. So I asked for a breakdown of my payments. And as it turned out, I got paid for attending an agenda-setting meeting. And then I asked for a breakdown of everyone's payments. And I'll preface this by, one of our board leaders had asked for an interpretation of these policies a couple of weeks ago. I'm surprised when I got the information today to find out that the board members who are sitting on committees have been getting paid since January for committee meetings. They're not board meetings. And also, for those people have been getting paid to attend these agenda-setting meetings. I'm just trying to, I'd like to have a discussion of how this happened, when it happened. This is something that has not happened in the past, and why was the board not informed? So I would like for us to go through this policy. And, you know, I'm one that doesn't think that members should be getting paid to go to these agenda-setting meetings, nor the committee meetings, because they're not board meetings. So I would like to clarify the policy to make sure that the policy is in alignment with what's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
This is a concern that I had, and I was the one who brought it up at the last meeting. I know that some information was sent out to us by the superintendent. Is that information not, are you saying it's not aligning with what your concerns are? Because when I asked the same exact question...
So, oh, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini, yes.
Okay, so as I read the act, and I can't read the number. Is it 260? Whatever, I have it pulled up right now. It says, "The trustees of Richland County School Districts Number 1 and 2 may receive a per-them allowance in such amount as may be set by the trustees of the respective districts and shall also receive a mileage expense per mile for attending school board meetings." For me, when I read that, that we're going to get paid per diem for a school board meeting. For me, my interpretation is when we have a quorum of five people, not when we have a board agenda-setting meeting or a committee meeting. Now, that's my interpretation, and that's why I would like to have a discussion on what it means. Oh, Act... It's Section 1 of Act 814 of 1978, amended to read. And it's also on our policy. If you go to Policy BID, they cite the state statutes and regulations, and it's the last act there.
Yes, thank you. And I would just like to say that I, too, would like to have a discussion about this policy. And of course, this isn't the time for the discussion. Right now, we're just deciding if we should have the discussion. But I think it is, there's no point in us, there's no point in people being concerned about things when we can write a policy that'll make it very clear. And that's what I think we should, we should do. So any other discussion on this motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I'm curious to know if a board work session is falling under the interpretation of Ms. Agostini for a board meeting.
So the workshops and retreats are considered, if you look at Policy BE and meetings, those are board meetings.
Okay.
Just committee meetings are not listed there.
Okay, thank you.
And agenda meetings are not listed there. If you look at Policy BE, it defines what our meetings are.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just one comment.
Yes.
I'm glad we are having this discussion, but I'm still surprised that we are. And the reason being is, we all know, and we've known from the beginning, even with new board members coming on and the veteran board members, that we have a policy where you get paid for up to 30 meetings. And we have talked on many occasions that those meetings are only special call board meetings and school board meetings, regular school board meetings. So I'm not sure as to why we're having a discussion about agenda and committee meetings because we all are very clear. We are all very, very clear that that's not what we get paid for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Ms. Agostini, is the motion on the board reflect what you would like to see?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Board members, please vote. Board members, please vote. Is there any other items you would like to see, any adjustments made to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I requested this in the past, so I'm going to request it again. I would like to have a presentation or an update on our academic update on our magnet programs. I know summertime is slow for us, so for our July the 9th meeting, if we can get an update on those.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to add an academic update on our magnet programs for the July 9th agenda meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, is seconded by Mrs. Agostini to add an item to the agenda. Ms. Washington, does that, does that motion reflect what you'd like to see? All right, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, one not present, and the motion passes. Any other adjustments to the agenda we'd like to see? Ms. McFadden.
We need to add the policy to get a board legislative contact on there, especially at the last meeting in June.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to add it?
It's just, it's already in there. I just want to make sure.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's already done.
Thank you.
No, I mean, that's what we're supposed to do in our, the actual policy, it's in there, that's what we need to do. I just want to make sure that it's added on there.
Okay. All right, if there's no other adjustments to the agenda, we will move on to board and superintendent comments. At least I think that's what we're doing. Let me make sure. Yes, okay. All right, we will start with Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. I want to say happy summer to everybody. Also, I'd just like to say congratulations to all of our Richland 2 graduates. I was sad to miss the celebrations, but had an opportunity to go back to Michigan that I could not miss. My high school swim coach, or my high school just built a state-of-the-art aquatics facility, and they named it after my high school swim coach. You've heard me talk about him before. This was something I could not miss. He was the man, he was the person that made me believe in me, and that's why I missed all of you at graduation. So I hope at some point you all have some similar opportunity. He started crying when he saw me walk in. Side note, he cried for a lot of other people too, but he cried the most for me. But anyways, that's why I missed graduation. I'm sorry that I missed the celebrations, but again, congratulations to all of our graduates. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mrs. McFadden.
I want to say, this has been a great school year and a great board to work with. So I would just like to say that thank you all, for all the teachers, staff, students, parents, everyone in this room that joins us every Tuesday night for wrapping up this school year. Just want to say thank you to everyone. Kids, stay safe this summer. Don't do what you're supposed to, what you're not supposed to do, and do what you are supposed to do. Get up, clean up your room, brush teeth, wash your face, put on some clothes, don't walk around your house, do chores without your parents asking, and get online and do some homework, do an audible, something like that to keep yourself going this summer. My kids are already saying they're bored, but they know that they've got chores and things like that coming, and we got some camps to go to. There are free meals at every, almost every elementary and middle school. So if you're in the area, walk together, go together, stay together. Y'all need to stay three to four in a group. Seriously, safety in numbers. Little kids, big kids, walk with little kids, take them to get some lunch. That'll be a great routine for you guys to get started. Stay together, there's recs all around, North Springs on this side, we've got Polo Road Park, get out and play some basketball. Stay out of trouble. Don't talk to people who are not doing what they need to be doing. 24-year-olds, if you're talking to a 15-year-old, you should not be for any reason, unless you're a cousin. Just stay safe, and we want to see everyone back here in August, safe and sound and ready to start school again. But y'all got to make the right decisions during the summer when there's limited adult supervision. Y'all have a good week or summer, I bet.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington.
Just want to say thank you to those who served on our legislative committee, your feedback that you gave to us and your support is commendable and appreciated. Congratulations to all of our 2024 grads, to all of our teachers, our staff, our admin, your principals. Please schedule a vacation. Richland 2 will run great while you are away. June is actually gun safety month. The news has been very disheartening lately, but I do want to say thank you to our partner, Be Smart, for just being an advocate and educating our community on safe, gun safety. Parents and caregivers, I just want to just stress, please monitor what's happening in your neighborhoods with your children, with your students. We need to be vigilant and we need to be vocal, because I have to be honest, I am tired of turning on the news and hearing about another student losing their life. And so I really just want to say to our community, we got to step up. We got, we have to pick up the phone when you see 10, 15 kids gathering and it doesn't look right. Check your, check your children's book bags, check who they're talking to. I told parents at Summit Parkway last year for their eighth grade graduation, just because they're going to high school doesn't mean you get to let up on them. As a matter of fact, you need to put your foot on the gas and put your foot down even a little bit more. But I just want to say, please, this is a plea, please, 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 because we can't do it up here. You know, the Sheriff's Department, I want to give a shout out to Sheriff Leon Lott and his, his staff for all of the hard work that they're doing to keep our community safe. And so it does, people don't like to hear this notion, but it takes a village. And we have to get back to, I don't care if they call you a snitch, tell on them, because this is not the Northeast that we, we know. This isn't the reason that people move over here, that they live here, that they raise their children here. They sent, we have beautiful schools. We need beautiful, intelligent children to continue to fill them every single day. And so I just want to say to our community, to our parents, like, let's all step our game up and make sure, like, do not take your kids to Village at Sand Hills and just drop them off. Like, know what they're doing at all times, because we are living in different times, and we do need to be vigilant and we need to be vocal when it comes to our children. In the name of gun safety, January 22nd is the Second Annual Project Jasmine Walkout for Domestic Violence and Gun Violence. I participated in this last year. One of our own dear students, and I think Dr. Elkin Scott mentioned it, was one of her family members, was in a situation, she graduated from Spring Valley, and she was murdered. And this is the kind of stuff that we've got to be vocal about, and we've got to come together. But there is a walk of this organization, they're coming together, and they are, they bring awareness, they host events, they raise money. They gave out three scholarships to Spring Valley students a couple of weeks ago. And so if you are able to on the 22nd from 9:30 until about 12:30, come out and show your support, and to all of our Richland 2 faculty, staff, and our students, have a wonderful, safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Yes, I want to say congratulations to our 2024 graduates, and also congratulations to our first-year teachers who finished the year out. Thank you for all of your work, and we're so glad to hear of those who are returning. Congratulations to the many retirees that we had this year. Please come back. Go on a vacation, but come back. And then also congratulations to all of our support staff and everyone that has worked so hard to make the graduation celebrations, bring them to. And it took a lot of hands to make their celebrations happen. So thank you for everyone who played a part.
Thank you. Dr. Elkin Scott.
Thank you. I think everyone has basically said everything, but I'm going to repeat anyway, because I have it in my notes. Want to say congratulations to the 2024 graduates. It was so exciting to see you walk across the stage, shake your hands, and see your parents just cheer for you. They're ready for you to go on to either college, or the workforce, or whatever you decide to do, but they are going to miss you. Also want to say, I see Vanessa Frazier out here, and I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, but she always does a welcome back to school prayer that takes place in August. And as I listened to my colleagues, I thought about, that's part of it. We've taken prayer out of schools. So since we can't do it here, parents, family, community, we need you to do it at home. But I also want to encourage you to go and be a part of that program, welcome back to school prayer. I've been a part of it for decades, a long, long, long time. But I think about when Ms. Frazier brought in Marvin Sapp, who's one of my favorite gospel singers. And if you know that, he said, never would have made it. You know, sometimes we have to think about that, and even as board members, and I'll speak for myself, I never would have made it without all of you, without your support, your love, your kindness. And that's what we have to do, and that's what we have to show, not only to each other, but to our students. I think about the quote, "People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." So that, I just wanted to say that, because I believe someone needs to hear that. Also, thank you to the classified staff for being here. Here you are on your summer break, and you're still taking time to come back and be a part. And just thank you to everyone who has tuned in this evening. Thank you to the legislative committee for taking time to come here and be a part of this. Please have a safe and super summer, and I look forward to coming to the summer school as well as the drop-off place for lunches. I really enjoy going out during the summer and being able to feed our students, and they're so excited, just to see many of you, to see board members as well. So I look forward to seeing you this summer, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we've heard all of about our graduation as far as the 2020, class of 2024, and we're all excited about that. But I want to share some interesting facts for the public, so that they'll know. More than 2,100 Richland 2 seniors in the class of 2024 walked across the stage at Colonial Life Arena and stepped into the next chapter of their lives. And yes, the parents were very happy about that. But did you know, the graduating seniors earned more than $171,694,479 in college scholarships? That's an increase of nearly $3 million from last year. The graduating class, yes. And parents are really happy about that. Parents were also happy that the class included 14 students who earned a high school diploma and a college degree at the same time. The students were enrolled in the Richland 2 Abbott Early College Program that's housed at Ridgeview High School, and it's been there for the last four years. Those students received associate degrees in the arts from our district partner, the University of South Carolina in Sumter, and saved, parents will love this number, at least $25,376 in tuitions per student, for a grand total of $355,264 collectively. Big savings. So parents of rising eighth-grade students, I know you're watching, to enter into the Richland 2 Abbott Early College Program, you have to have your application in, and acceptance is going on right now. So if you'd like more information, the parents, you see how this can benefit you in the long run, please go to our website, richland2.org/abit, and that will give you the information on that. Speaking of good news, want to highlight a great partnership that we have with Michelin Tech, and it's called Michelin Tech Scholars. So today at Spring Valley High School, it was signing day. So graduates from the class of 2024, Zachary Fowler, Owen Peterson, and Ryan Ward earned the competitive scholarship based on their scores on their aptitude tests and a rigorous interview process with Michelin. The Michelin Tech Scholars is a program for full-time students majoring in electrical engineering, and they work up to 20 hours per week as interns at Michelin to gain hands-on experience. Here's the other thing, they're getting paid while they do that. So upon graduation from college, the students become eligible for entry-level employment at Michelin as reliability technicians, with a competitive salary currently around $66,000, and an opportunity for salary increases with experience. So this is a partnership that's been in place with Spring Valley since 2019, and we want to thank Michelin for being a good partner for our students. We've heard about our summer meals, but I do want to emphasize to everyone that we know food insecurity occurs when students are out of school. So please make sure that you take your children and come as a family to eat. We want you to have that opportunity. So if you want information, please, once again, go to our Richland 2 district website, and you will find that. Cannot close without talking about recruiting, because this is our most active time. So just want to let those that are listening, the Alternative Certification Pathways Recruitment Fair is Thursday, June 13th, 2024, at Spring Valley High School. You can register online by going to our district website. We'll also have a classified positions recruitment fair on Monday, June 24th, here at R2I2, and you can once again register for that online. And then last but not least, we had the privilege last month to visit Windsor Elementary School and be a part of the team that surprised Angela Hartwell, as she was named the 2023-2024 Staff Person of the Year. And she was recognized for her compassion, respect, and dedication to her work. She was so funny, because she's been out due to surgery, and her husband had to come up with a creative way. And then when she got there, she was mad, because she's like, I didn't get my hair done. But she looked beautiful, as we honored and celebrated her for her outstanding work that she does every single day. And with that, thank you, Mr. Trapp.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I have a lot of notes here, but I see that Lowe's is still open, so I'm going to make it quick. I just want, I just want to congratulate, and everybody's already done this, but I want to congratulate all of those that graduated from high school. We recognize and honored a lot of those that really achieved a lot, and it was so good to be on the stage and see these people come up. Some of them were just so excited to be taking, making this move in their life. Others looked like they were on the way to the dentist, but that's okay. Not everybody gets excited about stuff. I was one of those people that dreaded things like that, so I understand. And it's really to those people that I really would like to share one quick quote, and it's not really a quote, because there's a gentleman, his name is Thomas Soule. He has wrote numerous books. I've read a lot of his books, and I'm one of these people that actually watch YouTube videos of interviews and stuff. It's incredibly boring, but I enjoy it somehow. But he shared his advice. The person interviewing him had asked him what advice he would give to those getting ready to enter the workforce. And that's, that's something too, guys, y'all that graduated, if you're not going to college or in the military, guess what? You've got to get a job. So, so this is what he said. He said, "Equip yourself with skills people will pay for." And I thought that was just the best advice you could possibly give to someone that's getting ready to enter the workforce. It's something I've done all my life. When I was at Spring Valley High School, we had the vocational school next door, and I took classes to learn things I didn't know, so that I'd be prepared to do things. And I don't like to let people know that I can fix anything, and as soon as your friends find that out, you're in trouble, because they all call you to come over and fix things. But nonetheless, it's a great blessing to live in a country where you can, you can learn anything you want and be taught things that will help you take care of yourself and take care of your friends and neighbors. And that would be my advice to all of you good students that have now graduated from high school and you're getting ready to move on, seize every opportunity you can to be, to learn something, be a good employee, give your employer, if he's hired you to work eight hours, give him eight hours. I thought of two things this week. I thought of two things this week, things that were said by coworkers years ago, and one of them I thought was great, one of them was terrible. The one guy, he was, he was an immigrant, both of them were immigrants, and that's why this is fascinating to me. He, his fellows that worked for him would want to take a break, and he would tell them, you got a break when you got this job. Now that, they hated that, but I thought it was the best thing ever. But then, then the other guy, if you ask him to do anything, his comment would be, "It's not my job." And I thought to myself, why are you here? You know, when you enter the workforce, do your best at everything you do, and give your employer a good, honest day's work for a good, honest pay. And with that advice, I'd like to close our meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to adjourn the, what is today? The June 4th, 2024 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Dr. Elkin Scott?
No, Mrs. Agostini.
Okay, got you. All right, motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Agostini, to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? All right, let's hand vote, all those in favor. Is unanimous, we are adjourned.